This is a regular meeting of the ZDA of Cold Spring. Tonight, we have Alison Antwan on my right, John Martin, Aaron Wolf, Elliot Hammond. It's his birthday, happy birthday to him, and he is out. So, the only thing we have in front of us tonight is 26 Garden Street in the R1 district. They went through a workshop, and so let's get started. The first thing is, do you have green cards, so to speak?
I don't know. There are receipts on the actual cards. We didn't receive every card.
That's okay.
That's what I've got.
Your responsibilities for sending them? You've done your due diligence, in other words, okay. Excellent. So.
Karen, it's up to you.
Karen, it's your show.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I'm Karen Parks, and I'm here with Tara and John O'Sullivan, who are the owners of the property on 26 Garden Street. And since we do have one very interested member of the public here.
Yes.
So, I think you're all familiar with the house. These are some images of the existing residence. And, okay, so as I summarized before, I think most, I think the board is aware, what we're proposing to do is add a front porch addition to the house, and close an existing side porch, and add a second covered porch leading up to that on the side of the property, and also remove the existing roof of the house and add a new roof that has a steeper pitch, which will accommodate a half-story on the second floor. So, I'll start with the site plan. This is Garden Street, I mean, on the side of the page. And, but the dwelling is pretty much centered in a lot that is about 50.8 feet wide, and was initially 100 feet long, but they purchased the piece of land in front of their property from the village, so that added an additional 20 feet to the length of the front yard.
Oh, I get it, okay.
So where the, the house actually, quite a significant portion of the existing house actually sat on the village property. So by purchasing the land in front, they legalized what was currently sitting over their property line.
Welcome to Cold Spring.
Right. And in doing so, it is allowing us to come here to apply for the additional work that they'd like to do, which although it now does sit on their own property, does still require variances for front yard setbacks. So, the proposed porch, again, is in front of the building, and will sit approximately at its closest point, 4.5 feet from the front property line. So that would require a front yard setback, a variance of 20.5 feet. And on the side of the property, there's currently an existing covered stoop, a concrete stoop with a roof, that we are looking to enclose so that it would become habitable space. And then, to enter that space, we're now proposing to add a covered porch in front of it with new wood-framed stairs to grade. So, the existing stoop is 6.5 feet from the property line at its closest point. And, so we'd be enclosing that, and the proposed porch sits 6.6 feet away at its furthest point, so no closer than the existing setback. So, we're not changing that, but we are increasing the non-conformity by adding the enclosed porch and enclosing the existing overhang. So, in plan, that's pretty much what's happening in terms of variances. Just in terms of the height of the building, we're within the code requirement. Currently, the existing roof pitch, it's about a, just under a seven-on-12 pitch, and our proposal is to take off the roof and add a roof with a steeper pitch, which would accommodate a half-story. So, our current building height, and again, the height of the building is defined from the average grade to the middle of a gable roof. So currently, we're at approximately 15 feet, and that will increase to about 18 feet. So we're well within the acceptable height.
So basically, this is a story and a half.
Correct. Yes. That's correct.
So technically, we don't care if the second floor is a half-story or not?
Right.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. Just, there's some grigs just checking in.
So, yeah, basically, going down the zoning conformance worksheet, we're okay with stories. We're going from one story to one and a half. We're okay with height. We're going from 15 feet to 18 feet, which was well within the 35-foot allowable height. Our lot coverage currently is 21.2 percent, plus or minus, and will increase to 23.3 percent. So the variances that we're requesting are a front yard variance for the proposed porch, and again, I believe that would be 20.5 feet of variance, because our proposed porch will sit 4.5 feet from the property line. So then, is the question of the side yard, which I know we were discussing, so.
Whether you need it or not. Because, because of the calcula, if John is right, they don't need a variance.
Well, it's.
No, 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 just, I'm just, from a high level, whether, I don't care if you're right or wrong. But from your perspective, if they're within.
They might not need one, right? That's my point.
Yeah, he may, they may not need the side yard. If I'm right, and I hope I'm not, you'll need a side yard setback, so. We'll figure that out.
Okay. So do you want me to run through my logic on that?
Absolutely. Please do.
Okay. So, again, it's 134-17, Section E for small lots. So our lot width is 50.8 feet.
Yes.
Okay. So, the two, we're allowed to then reduce the side yard to seven and a half feet, provided that the total of the two side yards shall not be, shall total at least four inches for each foot of lot width. So four inches times 50.8 feet ends up being 16.93 feet total. 203.2 inches, or 16.93 feet, for both side yards.
I get 16.69, but that's fine.
Okay.
In other words, 50.8 times four, which gives you 200.32 inches, divided by 12?
Well, another way of doing it is simply 50.08 divided by three.
Right.
Because four goes into twelve three times.
So did you get like 16.9?
16.93.
That's what I got. 16.9.
I'll say, yeah, 3333 after 16.9.
Fine.
16.9.
16.9 is fine.
Okay. So, our yards total, we have 11.9 on the right, and we have 16, I'm sorry, 6.5 on the left.
Yes.
Which total 18.4. So we do meet the requirement of.
More than 16.9.
Totalling at least four inches. So that would.
Say your side yards again.
We have 11.9 feet.
Oh, 11.9.
See that?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, 11.9. I missed the nine.
And we have 6.5.
6.5. Yeah. I missed the .9 mark.
So the way I read this is, you can reduce the side yards from seven and a half, from 10 to seven and a half, provided you have the width. So we do have the width. So then, if we're allowed to go to seven and a half feet, we meet it on the right side because we have 11.9, but on the left side, we have 6.5, so we would still need a variance of one foot on the left. That's.
If, yeah, if we do the, that would be the conservative approach. Some people will add them up, and if you're within limits. But if you do it that way, it's the conservative approach of you require seven and a half on each side.
Right. Okay. So, I guess that's up to the board's interpretation as far as of whether you don't need the seven and a half.
Or, yeah. Aaron, you have that up.
Yeah. This is existing non-conforming lots in resident districts in addition to the provisions of 13419. L, for a lot that was under separate ownership from all adjoining lots on each effective day of this chapter, in which has total lot width less than the prescribed herein, and that means it's a small lot.
Yeah.
Under 60 feet. So, it says, "and which is proposed for use for one-family residents if such lot is less than 60 feet wide."
Which it is.
"And the minimum side yard shall be reduced to seven and one-half feet, 7.5 feet, provided the two side yards shall total at least four inches for each foot of lot width." So, when you look at it, it sort of requires seven and a half on each side, and that is provided that you also get the total sum, and they're not encroaching upon that. So, you look at it from two ends.
So.
So we should give, we should.
A variance for the north side.
For the north side.
Yep.
For one foot.
For one foot.
Because it looks at it two different ways.
That's fine. That's fine.
Yeah, if, it's the proviso, it's the provided language, it qualifies the seven and a half feet. It doesn't qualify, it's not the inverse.
Right. And your thinking on that?
Yeah. I think you're right. I think the way it's written, yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Great. That was my understanding as well.
From that approach, in terms of making decisions.
Well, that's pursuant to the language.
Yeah, yeah, and it's.
And that's the way Karen interpreted it.
Yeah. But it's good to have two people who read the language, because I don't read that language, and I can make adjustments and not know what I'm doing, so. Good. All right. So basically.
A side yard, north side.
North side.
North side, you're right.
One foot.
One foot. One foot, because seven and a half.
And then we'll also make a statement that it also meets the total combined side yards.
Right. Yeah.
We'll make sure we note that. So we are looking at both in the case that.
So, and just to kind of summarize the reason why we're here, obviously, we'd like to grab some more floor space for improving the structure and adding more square footage, but that's handled within the setbacks. But the addition of the front porch, which is requiring the largest variance, is really to help alleviate what's currently, there's a very steep existing front stair that's entering directly into the house. So both to add curb appeal to the front facade and also provide a safer and more comfortable access into the house, we're looking to add the front porch, so that's essentially the application.
Now, you guys may have covered this in your workshop. One is the relationship of the proposed front porch to other front porches on the street.
So it's, you can kind of see it in the site plan. The existing, I actually don't think I, the. Do you know what number a mat is?
They are 24.
Look at the north side.
So, they, I do believe, have a porch which projects out, which isn't shown on the site.
Which isn't shown on the drawing, yeah.
Right. Which is maybe a little bit shallower than the existing porch. And actually, I may have some photos of the neighboring properties in my historical view board. So I'll pull those out. And then you can see the relationship of the porch to the north as well. So, it's sitting, it's set back a couple of feet from the existing facade of the house. So we're, the porch that we're proposing would sit six and a half feet in front of the existing building facade. So it does sit quite a bit further in front of the other houses on that street.
On that end of the street.
Yes, that's true.
Yeah.
As you get closer to Main Street, they're very.
Very close. They tend to run up against the sidewalk.
Right. He's got the aerial view over here.
How does she get, how do you get Wi-Fi here?
I'm connected to Optimum.
So wide.
I am too. I can't get it. I've been on.
So you want to take.
I've been on.
You want to come over here, Al.
Okay. No, but I, I'll take your words for it.
So, right here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's very close. So that's going to bring in another, what?
Few feet, yeah.
The closed porch brings in another, how many feet from the existing house?
It's the porch, the proposed porch.
11.1, was it?
No, that's including the, to the property lines.
The proposed porch is six and a half feet.
Yeah, it's not marked on this.
So, it's.
See this line?
Yeah.
I mean, this length, this distance is not.
No, it's not, because.
You just have to subtract the right length.
Yeah. So.
So it looks to me like it, like the new porch is going to be almost in line with the bottom of the Keegan's steps.
Yeah, here's.
Is that sound right?
Yeah, so for your asset, it's certainly not inconsistent. Not dramatically inconsistent, anyway.
Karen, you have a question here? Sure. Karen.
It looks to me like the new porch is going to be kind of in line with the bottom of the Keegan's front steps.
That's next to Seesner.
That's the big house with the opening kind of basement.
You know, I can't say for sure, but I could look at that image you're pulling up. Does that house sit forward of the earlys?
It's two to the north.
Because that's 28.
The steps do.
Yeah.
So see if.
I just don't remember.
Yeah. Just in terms of.
Is it going to be the block?
Well, it seems like it's going to be the, on that end of the block will now be the closest house to the street. But on the other end of the block, it's not even close. The other houses are right on the sidewalk.
Right.
How much?
And if you look on Church Street, directly off behind them, then the houses go right up to the sidewalks.
Sidewalk. How much space with the new addition to the sidewalk?
It's four and a half feet.
Well, no, because it's four and a half feet to the property line, which is, it's not on the drawing, because.
Oh, right. Exactly, yeah.
Because it's basically irrelevant in terms of.
So, to the sidewalk from the proposed porch at its closest point, it's about nine feet to the sidewalk, approximately.
So that looks about four feet.
It's not like it's sitting on top of the sidewalk.
No.
It's going to be further up.
It's also an angle here, I think, is kind of messed up.
So did you hear that? It's not, with the proposed porch, it's nine feet to the sidewalk.
At its closest.
At its closest point.
It's at a very slight angle.
And what's the distance between the front walk of the northern building? The lower, from the lower step. Let's just make it lower step.
To the sidewalk?
Yeah.
It's approximately 15 feet. To the building to the north, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
From here to the sidewalk is about 15 feet.
And the building to the south, we don't have an idea of.
I don't have that porch on the building.
So that would be 24?
Yeah.
Is that right?
24, yes, is the amada, that's correct.
Okay.
So I would guess that's probably around 12 feet. That'll, because that seems to be more in line with the existing facade of.
Yeah, I'm getting the sense that this site plan in terms of front, doesn't represent the front as accurately. In other words, site, because, you know, the site plan is for you guys, not for next door. I'm getting the sense.
Let's see if it's on the survey.
That's a good.
So, it's not, because basically, the site plan was developed from the survey, so all that's shown is the same information. But I think it's probably a fairly accurate representation, given that it's on the survey, in terms of the relation of the two. It just doesn't show the porch on 124.
All right. Can we hang on to Karen, or is, do you need to create?
Set the scale?
I should have. I should have copies of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to keep it in the pack.
I'm just going to make a note of.
Because that isn't necessarily closed right there, is it? Oh, that was the photograph.
Yeah, she's, she's just making a quick note. We can have it back.
You're going to use it in the exhibit? Keep it as an exhibit?
Mm-hmm.
There you go. Survey. How is it in relation to this house? It will be the closest, apart from the hill, it'll be the closer than that. These are further than that. We have, that's a, it's a whole building.
Yeah, if you look, you know, look at these, that's pretty close. These are all pretty close.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, on the, on the, on the west side of the street.
And, so how, do you know the street well, Aaron? I mean, can you tell what's 100 to 200 feet?
What do you mean?
Well, that, I guess 200 feet would be one, two, three.
Three houses.
Three houses down. Because I know we use kind of like within a 200-foot radius or above, you know.
Yeah. But that's mostly business-wise, the district, or?
I think we do it through, I think there's a special for, not that I'm going to negate it, but I'm just, this goes to, you know, impact on the, that's mostly what that, you know, goes.
Yeah, because it approaches a lot further on, and it just sort of throws a line of sight out, perhaps. I see the houses, he'll show you in a second, on the west side of Garden Street seem to be a lot closer.
To the sidewalk, and.
I think it was on the east side, the one on the east side.
And then, may I see those photos again?
Yeah.
Of the neighbors, because I think the one thing to point out about both of the neighbors' porches, I'm not sure about the amadas, but I know that the earlys north, that that's been enclosed now, so that's more of a solid structure. And the amadas, I can't tell if that's screened or whether it's enclosed space, but, you know, the one thing that I will help in terms of like, that I think will help in regards to what we're proposing, is it's an open porch. There's no intent to enclose it in any way. So it does have a roof on it, but it's versus bringing out a solid.
A solid.
Building.
Yeah. I mean, we still have to judge the setback fees on, on, you know, if it's closed or not.
I mean, you know, if we were to agree on the full thing, I mean, we could think of just restricting like similar lengths. You had that it's not closed, right? Fully closed, because it would change.
Yeah, we could always do that, I'm not suggesting it, but there's a.
What's your feeling? I mean, what's the board's feeling?
Um, I was just reading the 200-foot guidelines here.
Is that deep? And this is under R1? Yeah.
Home residence district, so.
So, I'll read to you what, you want to read the 200 there?
Um, sure. "If two or more existing dwellings are located within 200 feet on each side of a proposed dwelling, except in the case of a corner lot, on the same side of the street and within the same block and same district, said proposed dwelling may have a front yard not greater than the average setback of all existing dwellings, so located, subject to a special permit." In 13460.
Yeah. That's why I asked, do you know it well enough to go within 200 feet of?
But it says not greater than. Check it out. Where's that language again?
I don't remember.
And where it says, "subject to a special permit," does that mean it would be potentially allowed?
Not greater than.
With a special permit?
You have a set of, can I ask you a question?
If you met those guidelines specifically.
Does that mean it's moving deeper?
Again, that would, it would wash.
Right.
It would wash the, under special.
It's not precluding moving forwards, it's precluding moving backwards.
It is, because you're moving forward.
So is it something that the, the variance or that change would be allowed with a special permit?
Well, setback is like, the more distance you have from the house, the greater it gets, right?
If you met those guidelines specifically. In other words, if you went 200 feet, measured, let's say the average is, you know, 5.5.
Right.
We're just double-checking the language.
Yeah. It's wonky. It's wonky.
So, yeah.
I mean, one way of reading it potentially is saying it can't have a setback greater than the average of those dwellings within 200 feet.
Right.
So you would think, when you talk about setback, how far back the house is set.
Right. Versus how far forward.
Forward. So I'm just trying to make sure I know it.
Right.
What the writer was getting at.
Yeah.
How do you look at that?
The fact that we're doing with a code, it's all being rewritten. It makes me nuts.
I know. I know.
I mean, here's the thing. This is the thing. First of all, there is a front yard setback requirement. So what they're concerned about, they've already got that in line.
Right.
But what they're concerned about is it doesn't go too far back.
Right.
So they're looking for common ground. And so that's to make sure the house doesn't end up too far back.
Right.
But we are buffered then on the front end by what is a front yard setback requirement.
Right.
So that doesn't necessarily dictate.
So it doesn't.
I don't believe it doesn't dictate, because it says a setback not greater than the average. And a setback is purely a requirement of setback. So if it's setback greater, it's further back.
Right. Okay.
Or further into the lot on either, you know, if it's a side yard issue, but in this case, this is written on the front yard. Is that?
I think you're right, yeah.
Right. Versus saying setback smaller than.
So, again, the concern, I mean, we're still dealing with the front yard setback, and what the board does here is aesthetically and in line of sight.
Right.
You don't want to start, because everybody will start pinching forward eventually. I mean, I mean, that's the theory.
Yeah.
And you're trying to keep a little bit of a yard space up front. It depends, you know, it's the thought of the board on this and how far forward it's coming now. Of course, you did buy the property, but it still brings you further up onto the sidewalk.
Right.
I mean, where, when it comes down to the, I don't know, is this substantial or not? We're going to have to answer, yes.
Well, it would seem substantial.
It is substantial, and so, but, you know, what we're looking for, what's going to mitigate this?
Right.
You know, so.
So does the aerial photo show? Because I'm sorry, I don't have photos of like more of the houses. I would estimate the lots are. I would estimate the lots are probably pretty close to equal. So if they're all approximately fifty feet in width, maybe some are a little wider, you're talking about four houses on each side.
Right.
Are lots fifty feet wide, so.
Right, right, so if you go down four houses, what does it look like if you go down four houses?
Yeah.
This is actually the narrowest lot.
Oh, okay.
Oh, this one?
Yeah.
So then we're looking at like three, three houses.
I mean, maybe the, maybe right next door is about the same. So, but the way that, the way that John reads it and he's convinced me is that it's about making a yard.
Further back.
It's like preventing you.
Preventing you going further back.
Further back.
Because they're talking about, they're talking about new dwellings, really, I don't think they're considering um an addition.
Why don't we just, do you mind if we just pass this down just for a second, just to?
Yeah.
So everybody, you you just look, look to the east and west of the street.
Okay, so point to the house.
There's the house, right, right next to this, yeah, right? The one that has the writing there.
Yeah.
The wa- two white cars in front of it.
The two white cars, okay, so.
And then cross compare, looking at it back, and and so.
This is the house. This is.
You're gonna have an additional extension out of about seven feet, uh, six point eight feet with the new enclosed porch?
Six point five.
Point seven, point five.
Six foot, six inches is the proposed porch. Right, six foot, six inches, so six point five feet.
Well, I don't think there's any, any additional variation or, um, any anything additional that would need to be requested. You know, even if we redraw on differently.
But I swear.
So we could probably just.
This is not represented appropriately on the on the draws. Not, the the one next to it, my, you're gonna guess. The one to the south, I swear to God is further forward than.
Yeah, I think there's.
The drawing shows.
Than the drawing, I swear to God.
No, I mean, there's definitely.
They're forced. They're enclosed their porch.
Then they enclose them to this. But according to that, I'm getting the sense of.
Then what she's, yes, but the point is, you know.
Right, I, if the drawing.
Just don't want this thing enclosed eventually, cause that brings the porch.
That's what they're, that's what they're drawing in mind. And in fact.
Plans are show.
That.
Yeah.
Is 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 the front of your next door on the south.
Because it shows through anyway.
Is it the, is there a portion of the house that is set back and then comes forward?
It's shaped like, there's what's represented on the survey is the corner of their living room.
It's. Yeah, and that's.
Comes out.
Port is an enclosed structure, glass.
Is is comes out in front of that, so this, this is actually s-.
Yeah, so this is, this is squeezing.
This is actually set back from the front of the house.
It's a, uh.
Yeah.
It's your house changing.
Cause on here.
You're not seeing the front, uh, I'm seeing the, yeah.
I know, I know.
You're not seeing the part that comes up here.
That's right, there's an additional portion of, I I get it, but this one's still come out, they're about even right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're about even right now, and that's not represented on here, and that's.
But but now you're gonna be talking about another six feet. So my thinking is this, what are, if if you were to do the porch, what are the the wall heights to it?
Yeah.
Or is it just gonna be sort of pillars to the porch?
Um, I pull out the elevations.
You know, because one of the thoughts is, as you're looking down, as long as, you know, it's almost like a a pass through or a see-through type area, but.
Right.
Rather than a dense enclosed area.
Yeah, it's all gonna be see-through.
So this is useful, that's their house.
This is what it's gonna look like.
Hmm.
Oh, yeah, so it will be a, it'll just, it will be a porch with pillars.
Yeah.
Right. And so this is the side of you as you're looking down.
That's pillars of the drawing person.
That's, no, I understand that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
John, look at this, this is a better, look, see that, it'll be pillars and obviously a railing, but.
Yeah.
But it's it's open.
And then.
So you'll see through.
And then this is the other.
The other side, yeah.
Here's the, looking at it from the street and to the side.
This is, this is.
I think the fact that it gives it a little bit of an open air effect, because, yeah, because you you're starting to build a house pretty close.
Helps a little. Right.
To this, you know, lot and.
Yeah, no.
Everybody will then say, well, you know, they got it over there.
Right.
You know, the idea is.
It is nine feet from the sidewalk, is what you said.
It is approximately nine feet, I mean, I'm.
Just the property line ends, ends, you know, three or four feet before the sidewalk.
Multiple calls for an evaluation. I think if it's open, it's great.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You know, when we go to the public hearing, cause we haven't. Quickly open the public, then when they close the public hearing, then we have discussion.
Yeah, but we have.
So.
There's, there's no comment from the, from the public.
I just have two letters.
You have two, oh, good, good, you have two letters, good.
Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Very important.
When I should present them.
Yeah, no, this is, these are good things.
Okay.
Um, oh, Earlies and Bob Novak, uh, it's addressed to me, but it's to all of you, obviously. The O'Sollins have discussed their building plans with Bob and me and were very supportive. We have no questions or concerns. And so that's the family from the, on the north, yay. Yeah, they write to me on this.
Of course.
This is from Armato, which is the other side.
Yeah.
Aces. We are writing to express our support of the proposed renovations to twenty-six Garden Street Enclosure. We were shown the architectural run is the proposed renovations. We're delighted to see the finished product will be consistent with the type of houses and architectural features on the street. When going through old photographs of the house at twenty-four Garden, we found several showed a two-story house in the property now belongs to the O'Sollins. These photos from early nineteen houses, the house was reported demolished to build the current house. Hmm, the proposed renovations are actually more consistent with the original house on the property. As neighbors of the O'Sollins, our view of the mountains to the north may be affected most by the change in height. However, by only extending five feet above existing feet, it still provides us with a view of the mountains from the northern side of the house. Lastly, in a few short years, the O'Sol- the O'Sollins have lived next door to us, they've become more than just neighbors, we've truly become friends. We hope that these renovations are approved to support the size of families that they remain the neighbors for a long time to come. Jeff and Kristen Armato, Aces.
Yeah.
Should, should have done this like right at the front. No, this is great.
Icing on the cake.
Yeah.
Okay, so we got icing now.
Yeah, yeah.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, and it's, it's always great, cause we've had a couple of situations where people, you know, they learn about it in in this public hearing. And that's when things get ugly. So thank you for for going that extra yard to to talk to your neighbors, that really makes such a difference.
Can't be persuaded.
Okay, um.
No public.
No public. Um, Dennis, do you have anything to to add? Any other questions from the board?
No, maybe, maybe yet we, I move, I should read that we closed the public hearing.
Well, I just wanna make sure, when when we close the public hearing, basically at that point, if we closed the public hearing and hadn't read this, we couldn't submit these. So any more wonderful juicy information like this, uh, do you wanna add before we close?
No, I think, I think we're good.
Okay, so.
I moved that we closed the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So the next, the next step in this is we're gonna go through five criteria. Where we'll, um, you know, look at the the requirements, the variances suggested. And we'll go through those those criteria and judge them on that, and that's how we go through every case. And then at the end of that, we balance all of those findings, and that's where we 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 will make final decisions, which I'm almost certain we'll do tonight, so. Um, okay, so, whereas John and Taro, Solomon made application to the Cold, uh, application to the Cold Spring zoning board. Appeals for an area variance pursuant to, I think it's one thirty-four seventeen dash E, is that the special?
D, yeah.
E, and a one thirty-four dash seven C five, or C four is the front yard setback. And they're requesting a front yard setback of twenty point five feet on the front. And they're requesting a one foot variance, uh, well, actually a six point five feet variance from seven and a half feet.
Ah, just on the north side?
On the north side.
Correct, but um, the variance would be one foot.
Or they're asking. They're asking for a variance of one foot, a one foot variance.
From the seven.
From the seven and a half.
But they only have six.
Keep me honest. I'm getting too old. Uh, whereas we had public hearings held on October fifth, and this is a, considered a type two seeker. So no additional, you know, other than your short form, it has to be addressed. So, uh, considerations, the benefit sought by the applicant can or cannot be achieved by any other feasible means. That is our first criteria.
We've got two variants.
For, yeah, the benefit cannot be achieved by.
For both.
For both.
For both of them.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
Cannot be achieved, but but but, uh, yeah, they, they can't be achieved by any other means.
Yeah, for, you know, the the side yard, yeah. Cannot.
Cause you're working with the old steps. And the same.
The old locations.
Same thing with the front yard. They're just rearranging the steps. Both on the front and the side yard.
North side. Okay, this is, we're saying, yeah, so cannot. Any, anything else we can add to that? So basically, the side yard cannot be achieved by any other means, by, cause you're working with existing steps on the north side and the front of the existing building.
And they're basically working off of a building that was predated the code and it's placed so far forward.
Is sitting forward on the property, something like that.
Yeah, it's a pre-existing structure.
Right.
In order to make these ingresses and egresses, you're working with, against, with the old structure, your old footprint.
Footprint, something like that, okay. Um, the proposed application will or will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and detriment to the nearby properties.
Say will not.
Will not, and you have two opinionated.
Yeah, I was gonna say, those letters are, it's really put on the record, yeah.
Still, you're a spot.
Two.
This. Basically.
By referring, you know, we should refer to designs, they look fine, I mean, as far as.
Yeah.
Detrimental work. And then the opinion of neighbors.
Hmm, sorry. Keep picking up the return. There you go. Uh, per two letters from. Neighbors on each side of the property. They have no issues with proposed building or letters submitted. What else did you say, John, sorry?
Uh, you, I guess you could also point out that the houses on the west side of the street are equally as close to the main, to the sidewalks. I mean, it just, so it's not completely out of conformity with the street.
Yeah.
What are you, any other thoughts?
No. The side yard setback of one foot is or is not substantial.
Yeah, you could go one foot north side.
One foot north side variances is or is not substantial.
Right.
Is or is not.
Is not.
Is not.
Especially, it'd say especially since, uh, the combined side yard setbacks, uh, meet the minimum total side yard setbacks required by section one thirty-four dash seventeen eight.
Total. Yes. Required, uh.
One thirty-four?
Thank you.
Dash seventeen E.
Okay. And but the second statement, I'm gonna go on to say, the front. Yard setback of twenty point, uh, setback variance requested. And it's requested of twenty point five feet is substantial.
But not inconsistent with.
Okay, and we're gonna say the front yard, front yard is mitigated, right?
But it's it's not inconsistent with other.
With neighboring properties.
With neighboring properties, right.
With the front yard setback, uh, with the, uh, the census of the improvements on neighboring properties. Their lots. Any thoughts on that, Karen? Any action?
Yeah. Uh, number four, the proposed, the proposed variance will or will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. This is strictly from, uh, one before is sort of like view, this one is is around, you know, this is gonna create a lot of runoffs or something like that.
Is this just environmental, you said?
Yeah, proposal or is it gonna have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions?
Well, the physical would also be optical, as far as looking, you know, the structures side by side, right?
Yeah, uh, sure.
Uh, you know, I don't think anything on environmental, but you know, optically, I think I would add in, my personal opinion is that, uh, you know, as long as the front porch, which moves the property, uh, the structure further to the road, is not enclosed at any time. Because it right now has a pass through, see through effect, which.
Great.
But that's my opinion.
No, what's?
So it just doesn't have a a dense bulk look?
Right, right.
Uh, because it is coming out forward of most other properties.
Right.
But it's, it's, yeah. Lifts the air and light through.
No environmental impacts. So, agree? And, and basically no environmental impacts, okay. Uh, the alleged necess, here we go. "The alleged difficulty necessitating the variance was or was not self-created, but is or is not sufficient so as to cause a denial of the requested variances."
It is self-created, but it is not, but it is not sufficient to.
Yeah.
I thi, I think it also could be, say, it could be mitigated to the extent that it's, uh, you know, protect against the elements, you know, walking up and down the steps and.
And also, they're not, I mean, the extension, they're not really extending, uh, in the side yard particularly. They're just covering an existing spot.
Existence there.
No, they're not substantially changing the footprint.
That's the side yard, not necessarily.
Sorry, they change the footprint with the front.
Sorry, sorry.
Well, even though the footprint, because the, the porch is, is, you know, has, has no walls. It also doesn't change the footprint of the house per se. It's changing the, you know, in the front. It's just, it's just adding this element.
Incurris egress, yeah.
Yeah, making it easier to, to in, to enter and exit the house, so, in a safer way.
But, I mean, for our purposes, it, it does change the footprint because it's covered.
Yeah, I mean, technically.
I understand what you're saying, but, you know, if, by, but.
Technically.
The measurements we have to count as.
Yeah, 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 so the.
But this would be different if they were, if the proposal was for a porch. We would be approaching this differently, I think.
Yes, bulk wise, big.
Yeah, bulk, yeah.
I was going to say is.
Go ahead.
It, it does change the footprint, but it, I, I would add to that.
But it's mitigated by the fact that it's, uh, the change of footprint is purely for safer ingress and egress in the house.
Well, I was going to say, it's also a minor change up to the footprint.
Not really.
We already told it's substantial change enough here for the front yard.
So we should just, I, I, we just simply say that it's mitigated by the fact that it is to make a safer ingress and egress from the property by a new stair configuration.
Covered stair.
Configuration, because they're changing the steps.
Too many, too many laws, too many, too many consequences. Side yard is not changing the footprint, but they are close, enclosing the existing stairs and porch. "The front porch is mitigated to make safer ingress and egress from the property by a, by a new covered stair configuration." Okay.
Just to be clear, on the side, we are changing the footprint by adding, we're enclosing the existing porch, but then we're adding the new covered porch on the existing stairs on the side.
On the side.
On the side. We're enclosing the existing.
You're closing all the steps and everything around it.
No, they're making it.
Well, we're enclosing the concrete stoop, and then it has concrete steps going down to grade, which we're removing. And then where that step is, we're adding a covered porch and new step. So it is changing the footprint there slightly, but.
Slightly, yeah. Okay. I'm going to, okay, I'm going to change that to a slight change.
Or a minor.
Or a minor, a minor change to the side yard.
Footprint.
I changed the footprint.
For the.
And, and are, and, and is enclosed and are enclosing the existing stairs and porch. That's most accurate. Basically, in, in balance, I mean, I'm just winging this. Balance. These variances, imbalances, these variances do not change or impact the neighborhood. Even though the front yard setback is substantial.
The front yard variance is substantial.
Is substantial.
It's relatively consistent with the neighborhood.
Yeah, it's relatively consistent. Neighborhood. And side yard is, is a, is a minor change.
To enclose an existing.
To enclose.
Existing staircase. Is it enclosed or covered?
It's closing the porch. It's enclosing the existing side porch, really, it's.
Yeah, there, so there's a stoop with a roof over it, we're removing that roof and enclosing it and constructing a new roof. And then where the existing stair is, which is uncovered now, we're adding a small covered porch and a new uncovered stair to create.
But it, but it doesn't have windows and enclosed and all that stuff?
No, not.
It's, oh, an air slot, yeah, okay, okay.
All that said, the board, I'm going to read it this way, because it's the easiest way to do it.
Do we do the full balancing?
More or less.
We'll read what we have and see if there's anybody else adding anything.
Yeah, I have nothing to add. I think, you know, I, I find that the balance weighs in favor of the applicant, applicants.
Well, especially since most of the criteria.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, positive.
Right.
Right.
With regards to.
You know, you balance all these different things and it'll.
The neighborhood. Criteria, criteria, uh, support of granting
And you could put in there, the immediate neighbors have.
Oh, impact, yeah.
The immediate neighbors have.
Have written in support of the, in, in.
Reviewed the plans and are in support of the variances requested. What is, what, what would you add?
It sounds good to me.
My question is, do, should we just condition the front porch that it's unenclosed under the circumstances? And, you know, unless they come, they would have to come back for another variance instead of just.
Yeah, they would have to, they'd have to come back.
Absolutely, we should say that the front, the front porch is.
It's conditioned on.
Conditioned on, 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 not being.
Remaining open porch.
Remaining open on the porch.
If that's acceptable to the applicants, if you.
Well, they're not enclosing it now, so I mean, it's the way they're building it. But the bottom line is, I think if it was an enclosed structure, I think we'd have a little bit more thinking to do about it.
If they want to do enclosed, someone might complain, you know, that's the, that, that. We're doing our job if we add that condition.
Yeah, front yard. Yard variance is conditioned.
On that.
That the port, that the front porch remains open.
Proposed front porch remains an open, uh.
Unenclosed.
An, an open, not enclosed porch.
Well, I would say, um, enclosed, one or the other, not both.
So as to not have a bulk detriment to the neighborhood.
Okay. All right. Uh, unbalanced, there is no impact to the neighbors, immediate neighbors have reviewed plans, are in support of the variances requested. Front yard setback is relatively consistent with the neighbors. And the side yards is minor change to enclose existing staircase. The criteria supporting the granting of these, and the criteria supports, supports the granting of these variances. Front yard variance is, is conditioned on that the proposed front porch remains unenclosed, so as not to have a bulk detriment to the neighborhood. And I'll wrap that in a more smoothly flowing voidage. The board and is, and I'm going to do it this way, the board is granting the minimum variances necessary to complete this project as within the constraints, whoops, no. Project. This proposed project. Uh, the board is granting minimum variances to complete this proposed project. In balance, the findings need to be really for support of granting a resolution zero six two seventeen. Now therefore be a result that the Cold Spring Gordon Field have already grants application of John Antero Sullivan in the area in variance pursuant to sections, so on and so forth. The motion was made by, to accept this.
I also move.
No, I, I need, I need, oh, you move?
I also move, yes.
You also move, I need a second?
Second.
In favor?
In favor, yes.
Aye.
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 Aye. Appeals was unanimous, so.
Excellent.
I know this takes a long time and it's boring, but it, this, this is.
But we have to do, yeah, we have to put together the verbiage in front of you so you know.
And this, and, you know, the more strict we are in this verbiage, even though it sounds like mumbling at times, is, if, if you somehow got the neighbor from hell across the street, suddenly say, "No, I don't like this." We've got a decision here that's going to protect you. So it's, it's done for you protection.
All right, so then, then.
Did you hit save?
I did, as we speak.
And you want, or explain to them how, how, what happens next?
The next thing is, I write this decision in, in real English versus type as fast as you can in English. And it will be submitted by Wednesday of next week. That's, should move forward to get you your building permit, to move forward. So, you know, I'll write it and we'll distribute it, and so you should be qualified for a building permit. Be it known, don't wait too long to start your project, because it does run out after.
Well, it could be one or two years.
One or two years, we've got, actually, somebody had to actually come back and renew their application.
Just double check it, I think it's just, it, it used to be one year, it might be up to two.
Yeah. So this is good, this is essentially good for a year or so.
Congratulations.
Thank you all for your time, appreciate it, thanks.
Uh, we'll hang out to those letters, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Big time, yeah, big time, goes in the file.
That's right.
All right.
Have a good night, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen, as always.
Yes.
Uh, we have one set of minutes, they're pretty, uh, they're pretty straightforward.
Who was here on that?
That day, everybody, oh, wait a minute, Chair Gregory and Allison were absent.
So we can't approve it?
You can't approve it. Ha, there you go.
Okay.
Do you want, we, no, we can pre-approve. And we need, we.
Uh, Tom?
Mm-hmm.
Do, did you send, because I am infamous for not losing things. Did you send minutes for nine twenty-one?
Not yet, I'll get them out tonight.
I just, I just, again, I'm famous for, for losing these things and it's, it's, just making sure, I haven't dropped the ball. So now I can quite imagine.
Was there any mail?
The only thing is, and I'll forward it, there was another workshop.
But I saw that, you forwarded it to us, there was another one.
Okay. All right.
Jeff forwarded it to us and then, and then.
Yeah, okay.
And then you forwarded it to.
When's that coming up?
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you, Dennis.